You guys ready?
Sure.
Here.
We're on a different town.
All right. Hate to interrupt the tangents.
I think we need to get rain down.
Okay. Yeah, well, he can always change it. You have the authority. Good evening. It's Tuesday, July 23rd of 2024. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call. Clerk Christian.
Okay. Caravello.
Here.
Label.
Here.
Jensen.
Yeah.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mayaski.
Here.
Hayton.
Here.
Glasner Scanlon.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Okay, we have ten Alders present. We have Hirsch and Shurlocke absent in excuse.
All right. Thank you, Candy. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. Next order of business would be public comment period. Nobody was signed up to speak, so we'll go into communications and presentations. First item is Alder Person Schumacher. What do you have for us tonight?
Tonight, I don't have any historic fact of Stoughton, but sort of a future-looking thing for with elections on the horizon here in August. I have three different websites that I've supplied to Clerk Christian to post into the meeting notes here, but three websites that are, they're not along party lines or anything, but have an enormous amount of information about elections that are coming up. One would be one called ballotpedia.org. That one has pretty much any sort of, any ballot that's anywhere at any level that will be up for voting, so you can look at them ahead of time. Another one is justfact.votesmart.org. Information on candidates and that, of any level that you want to look at, although that one's a little bit more difficult to navigate through, so just be aware of that. Third one would be wwwopensecrets.org, and that allows you to track all of the funding that goes into any candidate, all funding. So, happy voting.
All right. Anything you want to add to that, Candy, about the elections, as long as we're talking about them?
Yeah, that's great information, Brett. Thank you. We have sent out about 1,000 absentee ballots. The drop box is open and can be used. That's been available for about a week now. So, the camera's on it 24/7, lights are on, and it's locked, secured, and ready to go. Other than that, it's business as usual as far as we know at this point today. So, we'll be ready on August 13th for everyone to come vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications from Alders? No communications. I have one, you know, something fishy's been going on in Stoughton. You've probably smelled it. We're working with the DNR and Public Works to try to rectify it. There's not a whole lot of solutions out there. We've been trying to scoop up or capture the dead fish that are on the river. My understanding, it has something to do with oxygen levels, but I'm not the expert in that area. We are working with our staff potentially, if it continues, to maybe temporarily move some of them out of the utilities building if it gets too much for them to handle down there into other buildings until things are back to normal again. But we are aware of it. We're somewhat limited in what we can do, but everybody is working on it. And then we do have a communication from Finance Department?
If you remember, the council had a parameters resolution which gave myself or the city treasurer the ability to take the lowest true interest cost note issue, and we got five bidders. I neglected to look up the true interest cost, but we went with the lowest true interest cost that Eller's analysis did. We got about $800,000 premium, and because of how things were set up, we actually lowered the amount of debt by about $150,000. So, we're at $12,990, so just under $13 million. So, just informational for you folks. If you have any questions on the closing memo, let me know.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Dave? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a couple items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve them. Motion by Jensen is your second. Second by Alder Mayaski. Would anybody like anything acted on separately tonight? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Our next item is R. 124 of 2024, and this one came from the Plan Commission, and that would be Alder Person Caravello.
Thank you. This is R. 124 of 2024 approving a certified survey map to divide the property at 1125 West Main Street, which is owned by Habitat for Humanity of Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Butler, was it? All right. Alder Person Caravello.
And this is a request to approve a two-lot ESM because they want to create separate lots on which they would like to construct at single-family homes.
Any questions on this one? There's a map on the screen that shows the lot. This one here is over in the corner of Pine and Main Street, and there was a nonprofit group originally that was looking at putting a fourplex there, and that deal really couldn't come together. They just had bad timing between supply chain issues and grant money that was not available during the pandemic. So after that deal fell through, I actually reached out to Habitat for Humanity and let them know that this property might become available, and they ended up purchasing the property. So, they're looking at developing this. I don't know if it'll be this year or next year, but they certainly want to get through the approval process, so they would have two projects in Stoughton. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Next item is Ordinance 8, Ordinance 16 to 2024. This is our first reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravello.
This one is approving an amendment to the Meadows at Kettle Park West general development plan, changing the underlying zoning of the alley lots described as blocks 1, 2, 7, and 8 of the plat of the Meadows at Kettle Park West from SR 6 to ER 6.
All right.
And this is a first reading, as you said.
Yep, and we do have representatives here from Forward Development Group and then the potential builder out there. I have a map on the screen right now, and you can kind of see, we're talking about the alley lots out there. There's a couple different views in your packet, and then there were some questions that council had and that we had at the Plan Commission that we went through. Is there anything you want to add on this one, Chris? I know your planner's report is in there as well.
Yeah, so essentially what this was, it was a ask for a rezone, and then because the direction that they've gone in the past is they do kind of an overlay of a plan development. So, in the course of that plan development, we have additional asks that are in the resolution. And I can go through those if you'd like. What would you guys like me to do? Go through them? Okay. So, essentially the, and I thought I had my planner's report over here, so I apologize that I don't, but I do have the resolution, so I can talk about that. So, the, essentially what they're asking for is flexibility from the underlying zoning change, right? So, one of the, here, I'll just read through them. So essentially, the underlying zoning, and then they're asking for an increase, maximum gross density of six dwelling units per acre to 6.5. They're asking for a reduction in the lot size to 4,000 square feet. And does everybody, do you guys need a little bit of a brief history on this particular? Oh, oh, thanks. Does anybody need a brief history on this particular piece of property? So essentially what it is, is that these lots have all been put in with utilities, street, and the 4,000-square-foot lots, and there was an ask to come back with a rezone of the underline and the overlay to approve for single-family to do two lots, sharing the line. My job is to write up recommendations for that, and so that's what I did for the plan development, and I went through the asks on that. So, so these are already pre-platted, and utilities are essentially in, right? So, what they asked for originally was a reduction in the rear yard setback and a reduction, sorry, reduction in the rear yard setback alley curb of 25 feet to 22, and then it's like two different, the different blocks that they plowed. And essentially, when they change the underlying zoning, it's going to remove all of the stuff that you guys approved prior to, and that's why we're re-asking. So, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to jump in. So, the developer was asking for an increase in max density from 6 to 6.5. They were asking for the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit to be reduced to 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit, because that's actually what's been plotted out there. The minimum frontage of street-side lot to house is 20 feet, 15 feet with open walled from porch. The developer is requesting a front yard setback of 14 feet with 6 feet for the open roof porches on the front locations. Tim, you're highlighting it. That's crazy. I can see it as you're going. I haven't gotten used to this yet, sorry. The side yard setback from the lot line of the house and attached minimum garage is 20 feet or 0 feet along the common wall on the side. The developers requesting a side yard setback of 6 feet from the lot line, 14 feet from principal structure. And then they were also asking for a reduction in the landscape. So what we did during that Plan Commission is we said, okay, it's 50 feet or 50%. They asked for 30 because that's the original. We said we can have 30 on the property with the other 20% of the outlots or additionally to this development. And then, let's see, the rest of number 6, 7, and 8 are, and 9 are existing utilities essentially, and what we wanted to do, looking at that, is like, we just want a review and approval from the utility company, but we also know those are already in, correct? So, planner's recommendation, so with it being a plan development, we can ask for above and beyond the minimum requirement. So, one of the things that we called out was minimum number of off-street parking requirements, including garages and all design parking surfaces, 2.5 for three or more bedrooms or two per two-bedroom. Minimum design standards, and I apologize, there is, I think, a typo in this one, with the reduced side yard setback, side windows on the adjacent unit should not line up. The adjacent buildings will be offset by two feet. So in other words, because we're reducing those side yard setbacks, you don't want to look out the window and see directly into your neighbors, so we're asking for a minimum of a two-yard setback on that. We don't have that. Each unit shall consist of changes in material and appropriate architectural details that add scale to long walls. This will include different sod and elevation. The same color and design cannot be closer than three dwelling units from each other. And this is the part that I messed up on, but I believe what it should have said on C, and it's actually in our, in our resolution correctly, is it was asking for delineation between the two front doors. And then unless the duplex is located on a double-frontage lot or corner lot, there can be no door, no doors may be located on the side of the yard. Basically, if they, we put a side door on there, they could try to put in a patio, and it wouldn't meet setbacks, and it could be a problem in the long run. Okay. Number three, due to the small footprint in the site, all proposed buildings shall have basements, and no existing utilities shall be moved. The area would be requested utilities be moved, shall be used as single-family homes. And I do know the developer wanted to address some of these. Number five is approving by engineering. So number five and number six are general plates that I put on all of them, so approved engineering, building inspection, fire inspection, and any other city department, and they are in conditions identified by city staff or Plan Commission. Does that, do you guys have any follow-up? I'm sorry that I, you guys all look so super thrilled over this.
Any questions on anything so far?
Thank you.
And we can have the developers kind of come up and tell us who they are, what they want to do, and why they think this is a good development for the city of Stoughton.
Connor Kearney here, Forward Development Group. Thank you very much for having us this evening and discussing our project out of Kettle Park West, and thank you, Chris, for summarizing the details there. We're prepared to talk through each one of those details, ask or answer any questions that may be asked. With me this evening is Chris Lester from D.R. Horton as well. If there should be any questions about the homes, the products, the design themselves, or any specifics on the construction, we're prepared to answer any of those. But before discussing some of those design details that's reflected in the planner's report, and ultimately the resolution, just wanted to see if there are any general questions on the development, on the intent here, the rezone, the alley lots. Before jumping into the detail, just wanted to make sure, answer to any general questions related to the development. Are there any?
So I think basically, the last time we zoned and platted the lots, they were designed for a single-family alley lots, and in theory, they could build them now, is my understanding. What they're asking to do is to take some of the lots and turn them into twin homes, which I guess by definition are a little different than duplexes, but they're basically zero lot line duplexes. We kind of use the words interchangeably, even though they're not the exact same definition. So that's what they're proposing to do. Some of the blocks on the map have like six single-family lots, some of them have seven. So the ones that have six, I think at least initially, they're proposing the twin homes on them, and then they have an odd lot, then that would be a single-family home. And then I think you also built in some flexibility that if you have more single-family in a particular area, you could possibly do those as single-family instead of the twin homes if the market bears that.
Correct, correct. That is a great synopsis. It's essentially how we've, how it's been designed. The main reason behind the rezone request would be to allow for the zero lot line product, to allow for the twin home to be constructed. Now, as Mayor had mentioned, there are some lots within the overall block diagram that just the way it laid out, it would be a standalone, single-family home, not a twin home that's connected with the shared wall. That was an earlier comment at a Plan Commission meeting, was to incorporate a few of those single-family to break up some of the block basades there, so we've been able to do that. In fact, I believe there was a comment at the last Plan Commission meeting to look at even adding more, four more additional single-family home locations within the block diagrams, which I believe we've, we're able to do and locate, and that's on the exhibit here that is on the screen on page two, I believe. But so, allowing for the flexibility, and it's all driven by market. The focus of this product and the reason behind the twin homes is attainability for a first-time home buyer. The homes that are in the Meadows later phases versus the multifamily entry, we're looking for something for a first-time home buyer to step into the development and effectively get into the community in a home-buying environment where it's very difficult from an attainable perspective in affording first-time homes. So, D.R. Horton Specialty, and Chris can speak to it much better than I can, but is focused really on that first-time home buyer, the largest builder in the country for a reason. Around 90,000 homes delivered last year targeted at families for that first-time home buyer, so that's our goal here, the whole reason behind having the twin home, and hence the rezone request.
Any questions for Connor? All right. And then Chris.
As long as he's not going to go into, or is he, or are we done with? You're into details now, or is that just general?
I'm prepared to go on details if he is would like.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on one question we had at Plan Commission, that there was some soil testing talked about as far as basements and things like that, that there may or may not be all areas covered, and whether that soil testing had been completed.
Sure, yeah. Happy to touch on that. And Mayor, what might be helpful is if we went to the resolution or the ordinance with each of those, those items, and I can reference the one that has the basements in there. It's Section L, and that's on the summary as well that you just had up.
Do you want to just use that? Is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine. So essentially, what we did is we reviewed the resolution and reviewed it with D.R. Horton and suggested any adjustments to the language that would fit our project plan, and that's what the document on the screen here shows. So if it's not listed on this page, as it's written in the resolution, is acceptable to us. So we only tried to highlight the items that we'd like to discuss here this evening to keep it a little cleaner. And the soils in those basements is one of the items, so that would be Section L. It reads, "Due to the smaller footprint of the site, all proposed buildings shall have basements." Our suggested revision to that language was that all proposed buildings shall have basements unless site conditions are unsuitable for such construction, in which case slab-on-grade construction shall be permitted. So that would be the idea. Once we get into detailed due diligence efforts, we know that we have a project that can be approved, we would then work with D.R. Horton in engaging the geotechnical engineer and spending those additional dollars to do soil exploration on each of the lots, but prior to the approvals, didn't want to expel those funds to do so.
Yeah, and an example I think that Chris brought up is, you know, if it was determined that maybe the water table in certain areas out there, especially, you know, potentially near the kettle, might not be suitable for a basement, and it might be more trouble than it's worth out there, but as much as we can, you know, we'd like to have basements, but if it's really just not feasible, we want to give them the flexibility, and that would be reviewed at the Plan Commission, is my understanding, is part of the specific implementation plan, the SIP. So that would be the Plan Commission's, you know, prerogative, I guess, is the way I'll put it. But certainly, if council members have thoughts about any of these things, we have Plan Commissioners here, there's three of them on the council, Tom and Phil and Brett, you know, you can provide that feedback so they can take that back when we get to that, you know, when we get to that point in, you know, in the conversation, in the approval process. Any others? Anything else you want to cover? You want to talk about the product?
Sure, and I can go through this document briefly, if there aren't that many, just on the detail side, and then, oh, Chris, did you have?
So if you guys find the changes to this acceptable, I'd ask that you make the changes in the resolution, so, because it's essentially becoming the zoning document, even though you do have a second crack.
Yep, so this is for a first reading, so if there's something that you want to include, if you could let us know that tonight, or something you don't like, you can let us know that as well, and we can continue to tweak the language, and then it would come back at the next meeting for approval. Oh, go ahead, President Reeves.
Just a question about the, because I don't know enough about it. So what are some of the parameters that you all would be working together on that would prohibit a basement?
Normally, what we would look at is like water tables, a great example. So if you, you don't want to put a basement in an area with a high-water table because it'll just continually fill with water, and we don't, you know, we don't want to do that to the homeowner. That's really the main one. In fact, during the discussion, it came up, there are a couple areas that don't have basements due to that exact reason in some of the current developments, so.
Yeah, and who would make that determination? Is that something in your department, or is that our engineers or working with them?
Yeah, I would lean heavily on strand to look at it and be like, okay, this is not conducive, so, yeah.
I think specifically address that, too, if I may.
Come on up, Chris.
We always use an independent, third-party soil testing firm to tell us what, you know, what would be suitable, what wouldn't be suitable. So in that instance, we could provide the data where we've got the third party that says, yeah, don't build a basement here. It's not, it wouldn't work. So I always like to have the experts talk with each other, and then they generally agree pretty quickly.
I know in the case and one of the other developments that we've had, we've actually asked for like a, like almost a deed restriction on those properties so that we can ensure that they don't have basements that get built later if they sell the lots, because honestly, that's just not what we want happening. So, I think anybody that's had a basement, the floods understands exactly what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't just be all of them. I mean, I think the sump pumps are part of the code now. They have been for years, so obviously, if it's just normal, you know, rain, which, whatever the new normal's going to be, we would have, you know, sump pump and that sort of thing would be part of the house to begin with, but there's just potentially some that even that enough, you know, won't take care of it. Go ahead.
Chris, as a follow-up for that one, when we looked at 51 West Development, I remember that Bob had brought in a document that was pretty thorough as far as looking at all the different soil types that were throughout his entire area. So if we, like if they maybe looked at that and seen like, here's something that we're looking at, because I know it was a lot of like hydrates and...
So, I was actually just out on-site last week. I don't, you know, but there's areas that are already starting to be dug for basements and that. I would hope that that was vetted prior to them digging basements as they currently sit out there, so, you know, I would say, in theory, it should come back okay, but if it doesn't, we don't want basements in those particular areas, so.
Go ahead, Connor.
We're good on the basement item. We could go to just the top of the page here and start with the minimum design standard, Section K there. That was an additional item we would like to discuss this evening. The resolution item reads, "Covered entries are provided for each twin home unit. Additional architectural details shall be required to differentiate the front entrance door as seen from the public right-of-way. The possible solution of options demonstrating compliance with this standard shall be addressed at the time of the SIP approval." This was, if you recall or looked at the Plan Commission meeting, it was the discussion of the element to separate between the two front entries on the porch. And in terms of how that is constructed from D.R. Horton's perspective, it is one slab between the two doors to allow for efficiencies and maintenance, mainly, think of snow plowing or clearing off, or part of what the HOA does. So rather than requiring an actual divider or something between two units, you know, our thought was to either eliminate that or suggest utilization of a railing as a simple divider element. That way, the bottom portion can be left open to allow for the shoveling of snow and saks. Another possible solution would be simply to leave it up to the homeowner. If they would like a divider there, there is no, nothing that precludes them from putting, say, a raised planter bed or a bistro table or flowers or something along those lines. So we're hoping to receive a little bit more flexibility on that item. That was one of the items to discuss this evening, so leave it up to Q and A on that item.
So I guess process-wise, Chris, is that something you just want to discuss with the council and give direction, or?
Well, the right, so...
Will we get to the next meeting and make amendments to the resolution, or how do you want to handle it?
I'll, I mean, I'm not trying to kick it back to you, but we can go through these, let you guys mull them over and address them at the next one. However, this one, I think, is pretty, I mean, honestly, I don't know that it needs amended right now because it says addressed during the SIP, so a railing could work. It could be something that the, you know, the Plan Commission approves, because I think the whole thing was just showing delineation of where the property line is, so.
Yeah, and certainly, if that's the route we would take during the SIP, like I mentioned earlier, if the council members had some thoughts about that, you could share that either here or, you know, at a Plan Commission meeting, so they would understand. that either here or, you know, at a Plan Commission meeting. So they would understand, you know, at least what your feelings are before they take a bow, take that into consideration.
Perfect. And as far as the next one there in Section M, that was, had to deal with utilities. And this one, I think, would be helpful to reference the exhibit that was attached here. Perfect.
Which one?
Oh, you had it, the previous one there, Mayor.
This one?
The one just before this. Yeah, the other PDF there.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
And if you scroll down to the second and third pages, this would be most helpful.
Thank you.
So the resolution language reads, "No existing utilities may be moved," since these are existing constructed lots. "The areas that would require utilities to be moved shall be used as single-family dwellings to avoid moving of utilities. Plan Commission has requested the developer add an additional four more single-family homes to the development for a total of 12 single-family homes." So what we would like to suggest, a slight adjustment to the language stating that no existing sanitary or water utilities may be moved. The intent was not to dig up roadways here with this development because the utilities are already installed. Essentially, the wet utilities are what we'd be focused on not touching. So any sanitary or water utilities that are installed. There will need to be some dry utilities that need to be addressed. That happened even on the meadows at Kettle Park West and the other home builder when they were building those. That's fairly common and relatively easy process to shift those, especially with home construction occurring, basements being dug. We expected some of those items to have to be shuffled and coordinated from a dry utility perspective. So we just wanted to make that clarification that, you know, the intent is not to move any of the larger wet utilities and sanitary and water.
And I believe that Director Munce-Pritchard had a conversation with Utility Director Weiss about this issue. And how did that go?
I'll just, I'll speak for Jill, since she's not here.
She'll love that.
No, she, you know, she just reiterated, like, this is going to, the move on the back end of these, because it's the back end of those, it would be on their dime. So that would be something that they would have to pay for. The wet utilities would be cutting into roadway. This would not cut into roadway. This is, you know, this is a decision that you guys need to decide what direction you want to go on. So.
And I think that's, you know, one of the reasons we're somewhat limited we can do there because utilities are already underground, the roads are already done. We don't want to take them up and start all over. It wouldn't be cost-effective. And so when you said it's on their dime, you're talking basically the electrical.
So could that potentially change somebody's easement? So maybe shorten their, make their lot smaller yet if you're moving easements? I don't know where you might be moving them to, but that, I guess I'm just trying to see what the impact might be for a homeowner.
Yeah, for sure. It wouldn't impact any lot sizing. The easements would have to shift to the lot line. So, for example, if we were to zoom in to the upper right-hand portion of this exhibit, what's shown on here, the legend there, it's the little green box with the red circle around it. You can see that it lands in a driveway location there. And that was placed on a lot line when those were the smaller, single-family standalone homes. Now with the duplex, obviously, you're going to have a driveway that straddles that lot line. So the simple solution is to move those electrical utility lines to the new lot line in between the twin homes, just to the west. And that would just require a new easement over that lot line. So it wouldn't change any easement sizing or restrict on the lots themselves, but it would change the location of the lines themselves. If that makes sense.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about that? Older person, Peyton?
I have just a general question to familiarize with the project itself in this phase. How many single-family homes existed or were planned before this adjustment in this section? And then, because I'm trying to catch up for the numbers, and maybe that's in the order, like how many are now with the twin homes and singles combined?
Sure, sure. Overall, the plat includes 92 of the alley lot homes. The area we're discussing and read here today is for 70 of those 92. And the density from a unit's perspective did not change. We're not talking about adding more units. It's really just pulling those two together to allow for the twin homes. So the density at the 92 or at the 70 in this case that we're discussing here today did not increase or decrease. It just changed the product type.
Okay, got it.
And then one thing I'll add, just for some of the newer members, we do have some deed restrictions on some of the lots. You can help me identify which ones they are. And really, the deed restriction relates to Oak Opening, which is the road that goes to the south. They would not be able to build on them lots until they finish off that road. That'll eventually become a roundabout. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Do you remember which lots those were off the top of your head?
I do, yeah. Those would be the seven lots adjacent to the park there. Further would be northwest, actually. They aren't alley lots. They're the traditional single-family lots.
It's not in this, yeah, it's not in this development, but yes.
Yep, yep.
All right. Any other questions on the density before we move on? Okay, go ahead.
And the second half of that utility, one, the comment with developer to add four more additional single-family homes, we were able to do so. So on page three of this, you'll see the location where we were able to find a spot that would fit four more homes there. Those are highlighted in the blue. And then, as Mayor mentioned earlier, with the addition of those homes, D.R. Horton very much monitors market conditions and sales data. So if, while they're building along, they find that the standalone product is more preferred by the consumer base, that's the reason behind asking for the flexibility in language that even if a lot is approved to allow for a twin home, if the market demand shifts more towards the standalone product, they have the flexibility to construct more of the standalone product. And then the final two comments, N and O, approval by engineering, building inspector, fire inspector, and other city departments. Any other conditions identified, city staff and Plan Commission. These are relatively standard. And the only suggested change in that language would be approval by engineering, building inspector, fire inspector, and city departments before the ordinance publication date. So essentially, placing a horizon date on when those comments would come in. We would want to know that we're all on the same page, and it'd be approved prior to adopting any ordinance.
And there was a question at the last council meeting about the shared wall and the soundproofing. And I think we have an answer for that.
Well, I think it was, I thought we spoke to it at the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Where I don't know who it was, but I think.
I think it was the older person, Hirsch.
Your inspector was able to reach out to Union Grove Inspector.
Yep.
So, and I believe it was resolved in a satisfactory manner. So.
Yeah, so basically, what we were told is they use foam insulation between the units, and that helps with the soundproofing. And Chris was involved with having our building inspector make some communication.
Yeah, I had our building inspector reach out to the city that's currently having some of these same models built there. They said they were actually fairly tight, like as in well-maintained or well-built models, which I'm guessing it has a lot to do with the fact that they're essentially constructed in a, you know, inside a building, and that they're essentially prefabs and then brought to the site and then assembled. I'm guessing that probably has a lot to do with it. But yes, the building inspector actually spoke pretty highly. And he has no reason to do that other, you know, because it was, it was just a, so.
Yeah, I think what we're finding is a lot of the developers are going to that controlled environment to build out the framework. It's controlled environment. They would say it's more efficient, more cost-effective to build them and then bring them out to the job site. And then in Wisconsin, we do have pretty, pretty good building codes, which you're probably learning. I don't know how they compare to other states, but, you know, they're, they're pretty highly regarded in Wisconsin. Now, we can't go above the building codes by state statute, I believe. But certainly, our inspector will make sure that anything that gets built out there will at least meet, if not exceed, those codes.
So if I can just add something. So N and O, I'd ask that we keep that language the same way it's written. Essentially, that what'll happen is if something comes along, it's our mechanism to be like, hey, these things need to be fixed, and it's more of a heads-up. Essentially, they're asking for every problem to be hammered out by the time this is an ordinance, which would be the next reading. And it could, that could be very problematic, right? So I actually have not had any issues in the 10-plus years I've been doing this with stuff like that. But it's also just that communication, like, hey, just don't know.
No, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no.
No. And so, from our standpoint, it was, I can certainly understand, and you raised a very good point with it. But at the same time, as the language, as it was written, at least the way that we read it, it was a, it's a very open-ended sort of approval by engineer, building inspector, fire inspector, and other city departments. At any time in the next however many years, can that all of a sudden be changed? Can that be done? So that's why we tried to put some sort of language on it that provided a sunset on it, where we all agree, you know, just, we've all worked together through this process so far. And I want to, again, thank everybody for the time. You know, we're very excited about moving forward with this project. We're just wanting to make sure we've got everybody in agreement, saying, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to build, this is how we're going to build it. Because once we get the go, we're off and running. And we don't want to be in a situation where, you know, after the first few weeks, we've thought about it, and now we'd like to talk about it.
No, I look at that as more like, okay, we moved a, like we approved the move of utility, and now we have to go back and adjust the easements. So we don't have to go back to the board to be like, can we move the easements two and a half feet, you know? So that's kind of how I view it personally. And I, I mean, I like you guys, but like that seems really excessive, and I don't want to bring it to you for that. So.
I don't know, I really like you guys.
Yeah, I mean, obviously. So.
That's.
I don't want to waste your.
Yeah. That was the only reason for it. So if that's, you know, ordinarily, we see it handled through the building process, through the permitting process. But if that's how it's done here, by all means.
All right. It looks like Alder Legaki has her virtual hand up. Oh, can't hear you yet, Jean.
Someday, there'll be a day I don't do that. The, I had a question further on basements, if we're done with N and O.
Go ahead.
So, you know, the water table and that's where she, I don't know if other alders have had a thought about if there were to be like many homes in a row, say five, or whatever significant number that is, the water table indicates, it would not be wise to have a basement. But yet, thinking in this changing climates, and we've been down in the basement a few times and lots of, lots of weather, any thought being given to what if there's quite a few without basements? What would be options for them? I just want to raise that as a discussion point. Not saying we have to build a basement, but rather, are there options around their safety or something within the building that is wise to do?
You're talking about for severe storms?
Yes. Like tornadoes, like high winds, like flying debris.
So I'm going to put Rick on the spot here. I know this has come up. I've had several people ask me about this because of this particular topic. I don't know, when you're talking mobile homes and like camp sites and whatnot, I think that there is a mandate for a shelter at state code level. I'm not 100%. I couldn't pinpoint exactly where it is. But I'm fairly certain, I am unaware of anything like that on single families. And that's why I'm kind of looking at you. And that's, this is so broad, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I don't know if I can give an answer off the top of my head here. Because with the GDP process, you do have a lot of like flexibility for design standards and things like that. I'm just not sure about imposing a requirement, like a shelter or something like that, as a requirement for multi, or for single-family homes if there aren't any basements. I would have to take a look at that. I just don't fortunately have an answer off the top of my head. Like I said, I know you have a lot of flexibility with the GDP process. I'm just thinking about some different constitutional principles that might come into play.
Okay. Did you have any follow-up, Jean?
No, I just, I'm wondering if there's any commentary or any information that could come about that in case there would be significant areas without basements.
Okay. I can take a look and get back to you on that.
Yeah, we do have other areas in the community that do not have basements. So it wouldn't be a first. And I think, you know, like Venable would be an example. Huh? What's that? Yeah, so the Venable, that entire area there, there is no basements, you know, and that needs to be working out. Now, they do have a clubhouse there, but I don't know if it's a shelter. It's not. Greg says it's not. So that would be really the one example that I could think of off the top of my head of something that we have. So it doesn't, I don't know what they would do there. But certainly, you know, there's options out there. If it's not the neighbors, there's, you know, some retail out there, potentially, you know, during a storm, they could, you know, maybe the association could come up with a plan. So I think that would be something that they could consider. But at this point, we don't know what that number may be, if any. But certainly, as we learn more about that, we can follow up on this discussion.
To be clear, the goal is to build basements out there, right? The idea was, as Chris alluded to earlier, we don't want a condition in here that would require us to come back before. If we said all of them are going to have basements, and it was unfeasible or impossible to build a lot that didn't have a basement, we didn't want to come back here and say, hey, guys, here, we're talking about Lot 67 tonight at Kettle Park West. The soils are terrible. We have to build a slab on this one, right? So that's why the limiting language was there, to provide that, you know, what if, just to make sure that it's done. So.
Thank you.
All right. President Reeves?
I'm certainly not a builder, so I'm now, it just got me thinking. So if you're, does that change anything if you, and maybe they, all of them will have basements, we don't need to worry about it. But if the water table is such, are there humidity issues? Do you have to change your building materials at all? I'm just curious about how that might change building or not.
If there was a water table issue, I'm trying to understand your question.
Well, like you couldn't build a basement.
The reason why you wouldn't be able to put a basement in, if the water table is too high, your floor of your basement would be where the water level, below where the water level normally sits. There's two things in this world that's undefeated, water and time. Eventually, that water would get into that basement and cause a number of issues with flooding with that basement, which is why you don't put a basement below the water table level.
Wouldn't change anything related with, if you put a slab on it, wouldn't change anything with.
No, ma'am, it would not.
Humidity or anything like that in your building. I was just curious.
No, it's just more, it's more of a situation of where, where your floor would sit relative to where the water sits in the soil surrounding it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other person, Schumacher.
In, you know, because you guys build all over the country, do you have other products in, say, more tornado-prone areas, Oklahoma, Missouri, Arkansas, those areas where you have, do you have other, do you have solutions where I'm sure that not all of them are baseminded places? Are there any products or any ideas with them?
I cannot speak to that.
Okay.
I'm familiar with what we do in Chicago and Northwest Indiana. But, yeah.
Other person, Peyton?
Yeah, I want to just emphasize Alder Legaki's point. And I think all of us just care about the safety. It's not, it's for the ones that will not have them, not questioning whether or not the intention. So I think for us, what we would like to know is there is a plan or there is some alternative that's available to them for their own safety. Even though they're in other communities and Stoughton may not have basements, I think it behooves us to do as much as we can to make sure that they're safe with new developments when they come across our desk.
Sure.
So we appreciate the effort to make sure that every one of them can have it where applicable. But when not, what is the? But when not, what is the solution? And I think if we had something, at least a guidance by the next reading of it, that would be kind of cool, whether it's from the city or from, from you all, so.
I'll see if we can do that by the next reading. And I'm certain that whatever ends up, well, I'm sure we'll resolve it if there is something that requires a slab. I'm sure everyone will hear about it.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, Alder Person Abel.
Okay, so I remember when we were, the last meeting, there was conversation about the cost of the home. And that was when it was on a slab versus, and so I guess my other question is, is like, obviously, basements are important for safety reasons, but is that going to increase costs for buyers?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Was there anything else that you wanted to cover or? All right, do we have enough direction, feedback? I'm looking at you guys, I'm looking at Chris, I'm looking at Rick.
Yeah, I guess if there are any thoughts about changing any of the conditions, it'd be good to know now, just so we can have it ready for the next meeting and not have to be modifying resolutions on the fly or after the fact.
Could we have the document that they, that you all, I don't know if it was in our packet, that you folks brought with your proposed request or?
We can email that out. All right, anything else on this one? All right, thank you for being here, we'll see you at the next meeting. All right, okay. Okay, now I just need to get reorganized, just give me a moment on this. So what I'd like to do is skip down to item number 11. We have another guest here tonight, Jacob Klein is here. And we do have an item that came through the finance committee tonight. So we'd like to introduce that and have Mr. Klein come up. And we can get him on his way and then take action on the other items after that, since somebody's here waiting for them. So item number 11 is R 127 of 2024, which would be Alder Person Schumacher.
Do you want to have Jacob run through the presentation to preface it and then?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
Let me just find it here. That would be right about here. Okay, so we do have a resolution in the packet. And then Jacob, if you want to, you and, I don't know if we can hear Kevin yet, but if you want to just kind of give us a rundown of kind of what you talked about at the finance committee, that'd be great.
Thanks, I appreciate it. And I do appreciate you moving me up in the agenda, too. So my name is Jacob Klein. I am the president of J D Klein Company. It's a company I started about 10 years ago. Our primary focus has been on developing affordable housing in Dane County. To date, we've finished, I think, 10 or 11 housing developments, including five that I've done in the city of Middleton. We did another one in Fitchburg. And most recently, we finished the first phase of the redevelopment of Westgate Mall on Whitney Way. That, that project was 305 units. It was 156 market rate, 80 units affordable senior, to go along with 68 units of affordable family housing. And then just last week, we actually started, or maybe it was two weeks ago now, started construction on the, would be the next phase, which is another 68-unit affordable family building. We'll start construction on the next market rate building in October, and then the final building in April. So at the end of the day, we'll have 620 units that were not less than, you know, not more than five years before was a 220,000 square foot vacant mall in the heart of the west side of Madison. So we're really, really proud of that development, along with the ones we've done in Middleton. I think, like I mentioned earlier, you know, any of you are more than welcome to reach out to any of the cities that we've worked with. I'm really confident in our reputation that we build a high-quality affordable housing product that's very well managed. Our management company that we use is Oakbrook Corporation. They've got about 7,000 units that they manage in Wisconsin and northern Illinois. Have a great reputation in the business. I think you can tell by looking at the buildings we've done. You know, if you were to drive by it, I don't think you would look at it and say, well, that must be an affordable housing development. You know, we pride ourselves on putting money into these buildings. Like I mentioned previously, we're not our own general contractor, so we're not making construction profit. We're trying to put as much dollars into the building. And in an attempt to, you know, have benefits with lifecycle costs, you know, granite countertops, we've used versus laminate, just because they last longer, they don't get burned or whatever you have them. We also have been, you know, we do stainless steel appliances. I'd be happy to tour you guys of any of our places if you're interested. But we also have been really committed, you know, we're doing business in Dane County. So, you know, we've been really committed to doing sustainable design features. Some of these we've been doing for years and 10 years now. I'd say we average probably 40 kilowatts of solar photovoltaic on each building roof. We've been doing 20% of the stalls as EV stalls. Use high-efficiency plumbing fixtures. I mean, really with this affordable, with doing affordable housing, we're on the forefront of sustainable design. All of our projects are Wisconsin Green Built Certified. Now, we've been doing, even getting enterprise certified. They're all Energy Star certified buildings. Unfortunately, that comes with some costs just for the certification. So, you know, if, if we're not required to do it by WIDA, you know, sometimes we might propose, you know, doing the equivalency, but maybe not having to get the certificate to, or not having like certified by the green company, but have the architect certified or something like that. But so sustainable design has been something we've been really doing. I think that, you know, anybody, you know, that reads, that reads the paper, and we've been hearing for years now, Kurt Paulson, I'm sure you've seen his study, you know, about the huge housing, real gap of housing, housing crisis in Dane County. You know, Stoughton is part of Dane County, but doesn't have bus service. And so in the competitive tax credit application process, it really isn't competitive because it's, it's too big of a city. You know, it's not a rural place, so it doesn't qualify to be in the, in the rural pool of WIDA money. But by not having a bus service, really, that's five points. The, you know, typical, I think, there's maybe, say there's 240 points and you need 220 to get there. So that, I mean, that five points is, is basically a threshold item and a deal killer. So while Dane County's handed out $40 million and invested that into tax credit deals, a lot of them are being built in the city of Madison, Middleton, Fitchburg, you know, where they're more competitively scored. Because frankly, the financial gap without, you know, a 9% credit or a four and a 4% credit, you know, compared to a 4% credit is substantial. So, you know, the question is, how do we, how do we make up that, that gap? Because I think, you know, this project entails 60 units of affordable senior and 72 units of affordable family housing, both of which I think there's an incredibly high demand for here in town. And frankly, I don't think there's been a project built since Elwinstead, which had to be like at least 12 years ago, I'm guessing. Maybe 11, because that would have been right when I started my company. So 11, 12 years ago, I'm guessing. And for a city of this size, you know, and especially in Dane County, I think it's important that, that we address some of these housing issues. And I think you guys are probably all on the same page. This year, the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago. The Federal Home Loan Bank, basically, all the member banks pay, you know, are, you know, are paying to loan money from the Federal Home Loan Bank. In return, the Federal Home Bank takes, acts a percentage of its profits and then gives it away every year for affordable housing deals. Some for down payment assistance on owner-occupied stuff, and then also for the affordable multifamily program. So applications were due for that, I want to say June, like early June. And so we submitted this project to that. And that makes up about, will make up about $6 million of the financial stack of the project. And so without them kind of changing how they allocated money this year and allowed for a lot more money per project, you know, that it kind of made it where we've been looking at Stoughton for a long time, now the light went off. Like, you know, this gets us incrementally a lot closer to where it maybe makes sense. We will, we tend to apply, I think our applications are due in the next 10 days to Dane County. So we're going to apply also for some funds from Dane County. So between the first mortgage, tax credit equity, some of these other sources, you know, we're hoping that we can mix it all together and with some TIF and have a project that's financially feasible that we can start construction on in the spring. So I think we're going to really, we're on a real fast timeline here in that, you know, we'll find out from, you know, in October from Federal Home Loan Bank if we're successful there. And then I don't think that the county's too far behind that. So, you know, we'd like to try and put together the financial stack for this deal before the winter and start right away in the spring. The site is over in 51 West. It's currently, I think, zoned as ag land and maybe at like 1,300 bucks in annual taxes. I think said and done, we're estimating, you know, the 132 units will be a very, very substantial increase in the incremental value of that, of that property. So I guess, you know, the, a little bit more details, I can get into all the, whatever little detail you want. But essentially, the people we'd be serving would be between 30% and 80% of the county median income, both in the senior deal and in the family project. The senior project being all one and two bedrooms, and the family project being a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, all with underground parking. And then we're working on trying to figure out if we're going to do some sort of shared amenities between the seniors and the, and the family and have that as more of a community space versus in the individual parts of the buildings. But it's our understanding the site is fully entitled, so it's approved for the number of units we're talking about. And, you know, we're, like I said, we're, we're hoping that we can work with you guys to bring another great project here to Dane County and our first one in the city of Stoughton.
All right, so thank you for that. Are there any initial questions? I know one of your, one of your teammates, Kevin, is on here as well. And I'm not sure exactly what Kevin's role is, but he's who I've been at least coordinating to get you on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I forgot, we had, Kevin's up in northern Wisconsin. Kevin is, Kevin O'Donnell's my director of development. He's actually from Stoughton, grew up in Stoughton, still lives in Stoughton, and.
That's correct. And hopefully, my volume's actually working this time versus the finance meeting. I did make an adjustment to it, so.
It is.
Hopefully, it's a little bit better. But my log cabin background gives me proof that I actually truly am in a cabin, so.
You gotta put the beer away, they're like, you can see it, it's on the table.
Exactly.
Yeah, so yeah, thanks for being here, Kevin. And anything you want to add?
No, I definitely think Jacob covered a lot of the material on that. One benefit that we do have for the round of Federal Home Loan Bank this year with the AHP funds, currently that kind of carve-out is really deemed as rural development in the eyes of the application this year. So not knowing if that's going to change next year, it truly does give us a better advantage this year for both the Federal Home Loan Bank funds and just ultimately getting this project to fruition. Outside of that, I honestly think Jacob covered all the material. Like he said, we're here to answer any questions and go through any of the specifics on the project and make sure that everyone has a full understanding of it.
All right, thank you for being here. Are there any questions from the Alders? And as I mentioned at, at Finance, I have toured one of the buildings in Middleton. I was pretty impressed by the workmanship built kind of for the long haul, which I can appreciate. I like the fact that you've integrated, you know, solar and other sustainability features that you mentioned at Finance. It feels like it's definitely a need. Some of the history on the site, I showed the map, it's the west side of 51 West. Initially, we were hoping we were going to have a 9% WIDA tax credit deal there. Application didn't score out high enough for some of the reasons that Jacob mentioned with the previous builder. You're proposing a 4%. So that seems more attainable? Is that, is that kind of the theory here, as well as the other funding sources?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, you know, it's a tough, you know, it's like putting together a Rubik's Cube of financing sources. These, you know, these projects keep getting more and more complicated. But, but yeah, I mean, as long as, you know, the, the soft secondary sources of financing we are going to apply for or have applied for are successful, those applications are successful. And, you know, we keep relatively calm, you know, cost environment and interest rate environment, which it seems like we've been settled into here for a little bit. You know, then, then yeah, I mean, this is really, the, the TIF is going to, what's going to make the project work or not, to be honest with you. You know, there's only so much we can do on costs, and there's only so much that we can do. You know, we're an open book, I think Middleton would say that. I think they would agree with that. And, and so, you know, we're happy to sit down and work with staff and work with whomever to try and put something together. But like I said, there's not a question I'm really afraid to ask, and if we don't know, we'll figure it out.
Okay, Alder Person Legaki.
I remember. I have a comment and two questions. One is, I cannot tell you how absolutely exciting it is to talk about 132 possible affordable housing units. And I have had a client, my full-time job is in, within the healthcare area, and I have been to one of your buildings for a gentleman who was there not a real long time, but it suited him well, and it felt, it did not feel like some housing units where I have been that were clearly, clearly marked for other purposes. And so I'm excited about what I hear. Question, I don't know if it's too early, but are you able to give a sense of what you are hoping the potential monthly rental payments would be? Or what?
Yeah, I don't have it.
Can you comment on affordable housing?
Yeah, I don't know how to do this from up here, but is there a way to like take whatever that slide is? And then if, like, how do I move it? Like, how do we go to the next slide and then maybe the next slide?
It's me.
Can you, you can do that?
Yeah.
There should be like, there's a, yep, there we go.
Which one?
Yeah, so I can't read this here.
I can blow it up.
But you, you know, this, this walks through the proposed unit mix that we have, the number of units of each type that we're expecting, and then the rents. If I walk away from here, it's okay, I can keep talking. Some cities get weird about that.
And Jacob, I do have it up as well, so I can kind of fill in anywhere we're at as far as the rent per unit per AMI.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put in the, I didn't put in the income ranges for each one, which we can get for you. But basically, we have, you know, one bedrooms that at 30% of the area median income that start at about, I want to say, after utility allowance, probably call it like, to the tenant, 650-ish. And then 50% one bedrooms that are like around 1,100, I think, net to the tenant. And then we have some 80% units that are probably, are more market rate equivalent because the incomes in Dane County are just so high. And those are, you know, two bedrooms that are pushing, you know, 18, they're basically at market rates, 1,800, 2,000, probably for three bedrooms.
Thank you, I had looked through the packet, but I wasn't sure if I was reading some of that correctly. Those are reasonable numbers. And then I just wanted to ask about the but-for test. I believe you about those Stoughton not qualifying and that this, to me, appears to be a potential good use of TIF monies. But I wouldn't mind our attorney commenting and/or other people who are smarter at this than I.
So I guess one of the things we'd be doing tonight is authorizing Alders to move forward with the analysis. So they would be providing the data to give you the information for them. So they would be providing the data to give you the information for the satisfying that but-for test and compliance with the TIF policy. So this would be the sort of the first step, and then Ellers will run their numbers and then bring back their analysis.
And then the other thing the resolution would cover is a cost reimbursement agreement. So we require a deposit to basically pay for Ellers or the city attorney for the work they would do in order to bring that information back to you all, so you can ultimately make a decision. Did I see a hand up over here? I saw you flinch. Are you sure? Okay. Go ahead, we can explain it right now. We have experts here. Probably won't even be me.
I mean, I just don't understand the process. So this is for them to apply for a TIF grant, basically? Is that what we're saying?
So they've submitted the TIF application. This is basically saying, yes, we're going to evaluate their application for the assistance. We're going to send that request to Ellers, they'll run their numbers and bring it back. So you're not approving any amounts tonight, you're basically saying, we're going to start the process of evaluating it.
Are you good? We want to make sure. I mean, that's why we're here, right? To get questions answered. Anybody else? Elder Person Peyton?
Yeah. In general, where, what is the status of TIF nine? Are we in a good space with TIF nine or are we, we're in pretty good condition?
I'll let Dave ask that. We've been running some numbers based on-
TID, rather.
What we projected and where we think we are. We're still getting some values on some of the properties that were sold because usually the initial values we get are based on what they put on the building permit, but when they sell, oftentimes they sell for way more than that. So we've been feeding that information to Ellers. The other thing is, is that, you know, like I mentioned originally, this particular area, we, when we created the TIF district, we calculated what would this look like if it was 100% market rate? And what would it look like if this particular area was a 9% TIF deal? So we have some flexibility, at least at the beginning of the process, in there to accommodate this financially, but we need to verify that and then plug in their numbers. Anything I'm missing, Dave?
No, other than the fact that the TID was recently created, so there's not a lot of value right now. The plan had included a Lytech or low-income housing project plan, and they went with market. So the market's going to give us a better cash flow. So while the TIF is very young, I'm not concerned about the health of it right now.
I think part of the challenge is, is there's a lot of activity right now, but it hasn't been really a full assessment year. Is that how you would put that?
Correct. I think calendar year '24 was the first year that we got TIF increment.
I see. I see. Yeah, I only ask because while we're considering, and I think it's a great idea and a great project, and I'd like to support it, but we do have TIDs in town that are not solvent. So that's why I wanted, I wanted to ask the question about where it fell. So I appreciate the answers.
That's one of the reasons why Ellers looks at their TIF requests and the pro forma and see where everything goes. And Jacob had indicated he's worked with Ellers in the past, so he's well-versed in knowing that he's got to get the information to them.
Sweet business.
And I actually did a deal with Gary Becker, the company has that before. Gary was working for the city of Manona, and we did the redevelopment on like Owen Road, basically. It was like, and that was a very, the city was really in a bind there because they had spent like, I don't know, they bought like 200 apartments or something and it tore them down. And I'm familiar with some of the players here, which is nice to work with them again, too. And I think one thing, to your point though, is, I mean, my understanding going to this is that the TIF is like developer financed, pay-as-you-go TIF versus up, you know, an upfront cash payment. So I think that really diminishes a lot of the city's risk. It kind of puts it on me, you know, with having to take out a debt to finance that, a TIF loan. But I totally appreciate that, you know, a lot of, you know, the way things were done in the past with upfront TIFs that have probably put places in bad spots on some deals here and there, and you guys need to make sure you're protecting your stuff, too.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay, so this did go through Finance. Elder Person Schumacher.
All right. This is R 127 of 2024. This is a resolution for an agreement with Ellers to, for a pro forma analysis and cost reimbursement agreement on tax increment District Number 9, 51 West by JT Klein Incorporated. So move.
Second.
Second by President Reeves. Any more discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you. Have a great, have a great rest of the night.
You bet.
Thank you for your time.
If I can reload here. Do I still have an agenda here somewhere? I do. All right. Item number, item number nine, R 125 also came from Finance Committee.
This is R 125, 2024, a resolution for a waiver to allow Stafford Rosenbaum LLP to represent the city in developing an agreement for services provided at the Stoughton Area Senior Center with the Town of Dunn. So move.
Hear a second?
Second.
Second by President Reeves. Elder Person Schumacher.
Because they would be representing both the Town of Dunn as well as the Senior Center. We're just saying, and all the parties agree, that this is okay. It doesn't represent a conflict of interest.
Yes. So my firm has previously done work for the town. We don't have like any open matters, so I would just be representing the city in this. My firm would not be representing the town. So it's just saying that you're acknowledging that I do, like my firm, even though I personally haven't done any work for the Town of Dunn, it still creates a conflict under the professional rules of responsibility. So in order for us to work with the city on this project, we are requesting just this conflict waiver, and then it would allow us to start putting together the draft Senior Service, or Senior Center Services Agreement, where basically the town would be a part of that. Again, not representing the town, only the city, just this one of the boxes we have to check off, so we're good to move forward.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Our next one is R 126. Guess where that's coming from?
Here we go. R 126, 2024, a resolution for an amendment of the 2024 adopted budget, Parks and Recreation for additional downtown bike racks. So move.
And is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Elder Peyton. Elder Person Schumacher.
This is to get a little bit more money. Let me see, I'm having trouble scrolling here.
It was money that was from previous years.
Yeah, and moved over to add some additional bike racks, not necessarily directly on Main Street, but somewhere thereabout.
All right. And I think this, did this go through parking rec as well?
Yes, it did. We had a discussion on the topic. We were moving forward about the project itself and how it would end up being represented on Main Street and wanting to do some studies about locations, what would work best, where it would be good for traffic for bikes alongside trails, if at all possible, not trying to congest Main Street itself for pedestrian traffic or vehicular traffic. So there's discussion about where in the placement, but I think we all agreed that having something to cure for bicyclists coming down in a city where I think a lot of people do want to cycle through and visit businesses, and that's where this kind of came in. A small request, they were considering for ARPA funds but found an alternative mode of funding the initiative.
Yep. I know they worked with Finance Director Ellinger to come up with the funding from previous funds that weren't spent, is my understanding.
Yeah, there were unspent bond proceeds for the Parks Division. And when you have bonds, you're specifically restricted for each one of those areas, so I had to use it in another Parks area, so that's why the recommendation was to use unspent bond proceeds.
All right. And then I also understand that Elder Person Caravelo might be part of the location process for these bike racks. You've had conversations with the Parking Rec Department?
Yes.
Do you have a plan?
You understand correctly, I have made a couple of suggestions.
Okay. Anything you want to share with us?
You want me to share?
This is top secret.
No, I just, upon, you know, looking at the congested situation on Main Street and limited space there, since we have downtown parking for automobiles that is, you know, about a half a block away in most cases from Main Street, my thought was to just make those parking lots, parking lots for everything that needs to be parked. And if we can take a piece of a parking lot, or, you know, hopefully not a parking space, because as we all know, there's no parking available anywhere, so we can't take parking spaces. But if we could take, you know, a piece of a parking lot that has like a gravel area or a median piece or something like that, as long as we're not taking away any sort of landscaping, but I think there's places that these can be placed that are, that will work close to Main Street.
Awesome. Thanks for doing that. All right. Any questions or comments? Nope, go ahead.
As I say this, it's probably not for this meeting, it's probably offline, but this is actually one of the things that I get asked a lot about, so I'm glad that this is moving forward. But I'm just wondering about maybe partnering with restaurants and such, so they know where bike racks are, because some people have said specifically, like, I'd like to take my bike to, you know, if I'm going to go out to eat at Viking, but, you know, just letting Viking know where the bike racks are and partnering so that the restaurants and that sort of thing know where to direct people. But, side note.
Yeah, we had a conversation about that in the Parks and Rec Department, Parks and Rec Committee as well, talking about putting up signage directing, where the bike parking might be. And we also talked about the, forgive me, I can't remember the title, but the new intern that-
Oh, the GIS.
Yeah, the GIS to maybe look at calling that out on maps and such.
Okay. Catch that, Chris? You want to use a GIS person to help map out the bike?
Tony probably will connect with you eventually on the request when we, when we get to that point, so.
The request is going to be to have the GIS person help map out where the bike rack should go.
Yeah, I think that's, that's great.
Oh, saying that in the meeting today, didn't put the cart before the horse, but, you know, sometimes you got to push the cart along instead of pulling.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
All right. Anything else on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Item, I think we're on the last one, number 12. Discussion and possible action regarding operational tax levy, common council meetings. This one here, I'm trying to remember what this one was. Is this one Director Ellinger?
This is the same thing that we discussed at Finance. If you can go to page four of the document. And Alder Schumacher, did you want to start the discussion? Do you want me to start it?
I can start up with this one.
Let me just find it here. This is page four, you said?
Correct.
That would be this one.
Correct. Yeah. So in, in the past, what we've done is, when we've gotten into the operational side, so set aside the CIP, because I was talking about that when I shouldn't have been talking about that in the committee, so that's something completely different. But when we get to the operational side, department heads put their bit in for the operational side. Mayor puts in his bit about it and also looks at what the departments are suggesting. And a lot of times we got to look at it as a committee of the whole, and we were kind of looking at it as it was an evolving document. How many did we have last time, Dave? 12 versions?
You're probably thinking of the CIP, which was 11.
See, I'm crossing everything up today, so just forget about it.
But yes, you're right. With the committee of the whole meetings, they were basically week one, week two, and then week four. So we were still in the middle of the budget process, and honestly, spending the time to get the PowerPoints and everything else would be better served actually working on the budget. Kind of backing up, you've got the, the tax levy is basically two things, well, three things. You've got your CIP, those are the construction projects that you're going to issue debt for. You've got the debt levy, which is debt based upon your past issues. And debt levy, for all intents and purposes, is exempt from the levy limits. Now, we've got a statutory maximum of 5%, but we're about two and a half right now. We're not even close to it. And the other thing is the operational levy. Well, with the levy limit law that we've been in now for 12 or 13 years, you basically have to tax to the max, because if you don't, you're going to hurt yourself in subsequent years. So the mayor and I were talking and it's like, okay, we know that we're going to be taxing this dollar amount. Now, council can do whatever they want, of course, but considering we're probably going to be taxing to the max, it's just a matter of where the mayor is putting his proposed budget to. So I didn't see it have a lot of reasoning that we have a separate committee of the whole rather than the council working on it. And I'll be quite honest, the committee of the whole, we've struggled to get quorums quite often. So I've proposed that instead of having committee of the whole, Finance Committee meets to discuss the budget on September 24th and October 8th. Common Council discusses the mayor-proposed budget on the October 22nd, and then council again approves it on November 12th. So we're not really adding any additional meetings that you folks are going to, we're just eliminating the committee of the whole extra meetings.
Yeah, and I think really the biggest decision points, once we receive all the financial information from the state, and we do have some preliminary numbers, is we have to understand where we settle with the, you know, with the union group, the police department, what kind of cost, you know, annual raise that we would give our employees, what our healthcare costs are going to be for next year, are there any employees that are switching from one plan to another? Those are kind of the big ticket items. And then the staffing request is the other one. The staffing requests, the last several years, we've run those through the Personnel Committee, and the Personnel Committee has helped me prioritize staffing requests, whether we should look for, you know, somebody that's part-time and make them full-time, or we try to create new positions. And then those are the things that I would include into, in my budget, that we would bring to those, the Finance Committee, and then ultimately the Council for approval. So when you think about it, if you really want to be hands-on involved in the decision-making process, probably the biggest area where you could do that is in our CIP budget, because those are the big dollars that we borrow for, for our buildings, our vehicles, for our equipment and those types of things, our studies. So I think this does create some efficiencies and still allows, you know, you guys ultimately make the decision anyway. It's just having less meetings, and I think, you know, usually by the end of the budget process, everybody's exhausted anyway. But I think that's the rationale for this. I like it. I do want to remind everybody that we do have CIP meetings coming up in August, and you should really try to get them on your calendars. The CIP is made up of the committee chairs for the six standing committees, but even if you're not a committee chair, I would encourage you to go to those meetings, because that's when we really spend literally millions of dollars on our road projects and all the other things that I described. other things that I described. And that's really where you'll learn, you know, what's going to be planned for, for next year. And we try to put a five-year plan together, but really we focus on approving the plan for next year. So if you don't have those dates on your calendar, I would certainly, you know, encourage you to do that. But I do agree with, with, you know, what we're proposing here. I just think that by the end of the meeting process, we've all, or the budget process, we've all pretty much had it, and I think this streamlines it.
And Mayor, the dates for the CIP are item number five, that's on your screen.
And whenever we have the operational budget discussions in Finance Committee, you all are welcome to come into that committee. I'm pretty friendly to, you know, outside people coming in beyond the committee, so.
So did we, did we get a motion on this one? Or do we, do we need something? What do you need?
I don't think we really need a motion. I'm looking for direction. If, if anybody doesn't have any objection, we'll go forward with this plan.
All right, go ahead.
I don't have an objection, per se. The question I have is with ordinances related to committee of the whole, is this circumventing some of the, like, the purpose of committee of the whole as written into our city ordinances? Or is it kind of not applicable and there's no real issue?
I don't think the committee of the whole is in ordinances. We might look at our council rules and see if, I don't know if it's that specific. And we would still have committee of the whole for other types of meetings.
Sure.
Like we did with ARPA, for example.
Yep.
Or anything else that the council president would want to do. And we do have opportunities in the statute, I think, to go into committee of the whole at our council meetings as well, if that's something you wanted to do. Even if you wanted to do it for the budget portion, we could certainly structure the agenda that way, if you felt that you wanted the council president to run that portion of the meeting, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure, like, this is, I think this is great, fewer meetings is great, where we can be efficient and effective, but I wanted to make sure we weren't violating anything in our own bylaws and ordinances.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the council rules just to make sure, but I'm just pulling up the ordinance that you have on the committee of the whole, and it's, the purpose is just to have informal discussion, it's not specific about any particular topics, so it's more or less whatever process you all feel is the best for setting your budget.
Anything else on this one? Alder Person, Judson.
I just might suggest that the CP Committee take a look at the council rules, because I don't believe they've been looked at or adjusted for quite a while now.
Yeah, probably not since, well, we did an adjustment to allow some of the citizens' members to be vice chairs.
Right, that was probably the last time.
And then we did some stuff for the virtual meetings, but other than that, we haven't really spent a lot of time, and we can certainly do that.
Yeah, concerning this, I think that maybe they should just take a look at it and see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted.
All right, thank you for that. All right, anybody else? Okay, that's it. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I heard Schumacher first.
I'll second.
Oh, and Peyton's going to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Snuck in there all over his looking.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. We're adjourned, thank you.